Today is Monday, December 12th and in the news we have over a thousand illegal immigrants are crossing the border as we speak. And what is being called the largest group in decades to cross over at once as Title 42 is coming to an end on December 21st. L A city council member Kevin De Leon quote assaults an activist during a Christmas event in the community. And Elon Musk is booed at a Dave Chappelle event and Twitter files part five is being released today. This is informed daily. I am your host Anthony Cabasa. Let's jump into that first story. Before we get started, I want to make sure let's like, subscribe, share if you like this, give us a five star rating over our podcast. Audio available on iTunes podcasts or Apple podcasts. It's also available on iHeart radio and Spotify. So if you want to head over there, this is how we grow. This is how we get good ratings. This is how we get shared. Everything is organic. Everything is grassroots. Everything is we the people. So here we have Bill Malugan of Bill for Bill Fox L A at Bill Fox L A rather on Twitter. Obviously you guys know he's been doing a fantastic job over at the border. Says breaking a huge migrant caravan of over 1,000 people crossed illegally into El Paso, Texas last night. Making it the largest single group we have ever seen. The city of El Paso reports border patrol now has over 5,000 in custody has released hundreds to city streets. So this is a video for you guys to watch. That's a lot of people. Wow. If women, men, mostly children. Wow. Here's a different angle. You can see where the ball, the, the border has stopped or the wall has stopped. Even got little bonfires going. Wow. So there you have it. This is what's going on right now at the border and it's um, you know, it's, it's. You know, we've talked about this many times here on the show about the ongoing border crisis. Why is this not good? Right? It's definitely not good. What is happening at the border? You can call it an invasion. You can call it, you know, oh, this is just lack of border security. This is obviously an administration that continues to fail to do its job by the way. And, and is allowing this to happen. The record traffic of, of humans being allowed into the United States. Who knows where these people are going? Who knows how many of these people are dying on the way up? It's, it's really just devastating what's happening and to see videos like this. And seeing border patrol being over, over ran completely just it's dumbfounding really. But uh, here's another tweet that Bill Fox says new the chief of U S border patrol reports. There have been over 16,000 migrant encounters at the border in the last 48 hours. That's an average of 8,000 per day. Former Obama DHS secretary Jen Johnson once said a thousand in a day would be a crisis. We are eight times that right now. Former Obama DHS secretary Jen Johnson's once said a thousand migrants in a day would be considered a crisis. They are eight times that right now. And you have an administration that continues to ignore the problem. That says that there are more important things happening in the world right now than the ongoing border crisis. And you have of course corporate media, mainstream media remaining silent and all of this because they are complicit in what is happening. They're aiding and abetting this administration that continues to ignore. And, 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 and look, it's not just, if you're one of those people that wants to sit there and say, well, you know, these are just. People trying to make it over because they're, they're fleeing, you know, bad circumstances. Not in all cases. The reality is a lot of these people that are coming over, that there is no real crisis where they're coming from. That, you know, I, I've spoken to some of these migrants and they say, we're just coming over because we know this is a good time to come. We're coming over because we don't like our local government. We don't like our local policies. And I say, dude, I'm from Los Angeles. Welcome to my world. Like where do I go? Where do I sign up? Right? I mean, it's just, it, it's just really insane and, and, and. To see, it is just going to get worse. Title 42, by the way, if, if you're not aware, Title 42 was basically a Trump era policy during the height of the pandemic. It allowed border patrol and, and our, our, our border patrol agents to just be able to. Get people back across the border into Mexico under the pandemic, right? And then here you have, this is again Fox news. Border officials seeing massive migrant numbers, large groups ahead of Title 42 send, which is going to be ending in about nine days, December 21st. It says officials at the, at the southern border are seeing massive migrant numbers at the southern border. And it just enlarges for you guys. So you guys can read along for those watching. Along with the number of large groups ahead of the expected end of the ability to expel migrants under the Title 42 public health order in a few weeks. CVP sources tell Fox News that migrant numbers for fiscal year 23, which began in October are at over 485,000. And are expected to hit the half a million mark this weekend. So far 156,000 have been expelled under Title 42. So just to kind of give you some perspective. 156,000, which is what like? 20% of, of the 485,000, something like that, 10% uh. I don't know, something like that, 30%, it looks like. If my math is, my, my quick maths is correct. It says that out of those 485,000, 156,000 have been expelled under Title 42. Meaning that once Title 42 is ended come December 21st. No one can really be expelled under Title 42 anymore. So of those 485,000, all of them. Would have to be processed and brought back into the United States or brought into the United States. And, and it's just getting out of control. I didn't, I don't think I pulled this one up, but. I want to try to see if I can quickly uh, bring it up over here. Yes, this is Ali Bradley. I'm going to share this guys with you. So yeah, it's already up here. Border Patrol sources telling me they're being directed to process faster and get at least 10,000 migrants out of VP custody, border patrol custody. Quote, by any means ahead of DHS secretary Mayorkas visit tomorrow. This was posted today. So that means tomorrow, December 13th. Says agents say migrants will be returned voluntarily or released with an N T A, which stands for notice to appear. Secretary Mayorkas is set to visit the El Paso sector tomorrow. Agents say whenever a higher up comes to visit, they clean house. So it looks like everything is under control. This isn't just unique to the border, by the way, the whole make it look clean so that it looks like everything's uh, you know. Everything looks like it's under control. This happened just here in Los Angeles when Karen Bass was being sworn in just yesterday. Karen Bass, the, the mayor that won here, the, the candidate that won here in Los Angeles. Which by the way, has already declared a state of emergency for the homelessness. Despite billions already being invested into homelessness, who knows what this is going to mean under now Karen Bass. But Karen Bass was sworn in yesterday. The vice president was here as well. Kamala Harris's Kamala Harris to swear her in. If I'm not mistaken, she was the one that swore in, or I'm not sure if she was just participating. I didn't really stay on top of that too much. But uh, what they were doing was they were also cleaning up a lot of the homeless encampments in Los Angeles. Why? Well, because you had the vice president visiting and because you have a new mayor that's going to be in front of city hall being sworn in. So they need to make it seem like city hall and the surrounding areas don't have a homelessness problem. Right? Because the optics, we need media to not capture crazy people in the background. People committing violent acts, people shooting up heroin, people shooting up drugs in the background while the mayor is being sworn in. And while you have the VP Kamala Harris in town to visit, you need to make it seem like all is well. This is again, not unique to the border. So definitely not surprised with what's happening. But my question is, how much more of this are we looking to put up with? This border crisis has been happening. It's been incrementing. It has been going on since this administration took over. They reversed a lot of old policies and, and. All we have seen is record human trafficking, record drug trafficking at the border. Last week I read you guys off a statement from the border patrol, border patrol union president. Say, saying that of course the president doesn't care about the ongoing crisis. And it's, it's, it's devastating to think about what's going on and it's even more devastating. But yet not completely surprising to see that corporate media, mainstream media doesn't care all of a sudden. They used to care when there was an orange man in this, in the Oval Office, but now they don't care. And that to me is the greatest crime of it all, that you, you have this media that is complicit. And, and, and the continuing silencing in the thwarting and having these, these political pundits. Commentate or do opinion pieces on their, on their mainstream media pages, the New York Times, the LA Times, wherever, whoever, you know, CNN, MSNBC. They want, you know, they have these pundits like Paula Ramos, who is Jorge Ramos's daughter. And, and they want to continue to gaslight you and to, and tell you that no, there is no border crisis. No, this, this is, this is fake. I remember going into the midterm elections, Paula Ramos went on, I, I believe it was Univision, if I'm not mistaken. And she went on there and saying that there were Spanish, Spanish speaking misinformers. This is something that Media Matters also. You know, actually I think it was them that called us Spanish speaking misinformers because we went down to the border and we covered the crisis that's happening. And they want to tie it into quote QAnon conspiracies that children are being trafficked across the border. I've interviewed those children. Axios has a report saying that a third of the children that have been brought into the U S illegally have disappeared. They don't know where they are. The Biden administration, the DHS administration, they don't know where these children are. How is that us being Spanish speaking misinformers? That is asinine. This is again, it's not even conspiratorial. It's just the reality that these people don't care about what's happening. They used to care. When is the last time AOC went down to the border? When is the last time these progressive groups, all these abolitionist groups went down to the border to see just how bad it's gotten? And now you have Title 42 that's about to end in nine days and it's only going to get worse. I have journalist friends all over the nation. They're telling me this is going to be apocalyptic. It's, it's, it's detrimental and you know, and there's a video that shows Democratic Chuck Schumer. Senator Chuck Schumer saying that, you know, uh, the reason why we need mass immigration. And he didn't even care to make the difference between legal or illegal immigration. This was when he was trying to say, you know, we should give mass amnesty to every illegal immigrant, not just DACA recipients, but all illegal immigrants. It's because the, the U S birth rates are so low, Americans. That are being propagandized to abort their children, their birth rates are so low. That we need to import millions of illegal immigrants or migrants to begin with. To come into the U S so they can take up these jobs, these low wage jobs. He didn't say low wage jobs, but he did say, you know, we need them to take up these jobs. That Americans don't want. To me, that's pretty racist. You, you know, like you, you don't get to, you don't get to propagandize the American people. To have an abortion as if it were some sort of um, you know. What's the word I'm looking for here? It, it like um. Contraceptive. That's what the word I'm looking for. You don't get to propagandize to people that like, hey, abortion is just like a country. It's a form of contraception. And hey, you can abort up to nine months if you want to. And then you're importing illegal immigrants or you're trying to give amnesty to millions of them, or you're okay with open borders because you're like, well. Americans are not having babies. What are we supposed to do? This all almost seems, dare I say it orchestrated. Someone's got to answer these questions and unfortunately it doesn't matter who you ask, whether it's DHS secretary Mayorkas. Or if it's the president, or if it's the White House, or if it's the press secretary, you know, Corrine Jean-Pierre. No one has answers for this. They just said, no, there is no crisis. No, he doesn't need to visit the border because we have advisors. We have people that go down there and they tell us how bad it is and it's just not that bad. This is insane. And Obama officials said that a thousand at, at the border a day is a crisis. We're at 8,000 a day now. It's being done deliberately and who knows to what end. It's just absolutely insane. But with that. We'll get into our next story here. This is going to be Kevin De Leon. If you don't know who Kevin De Leon is, actually you know what? Before I get into this, I'm just going to go ahead and bring up the article first for context, for those of you that probably either heard of this story. Or probably are not that up to date with the story, but this is um, Vox, the Los Angeles city council's racist recording scandal explained. In their quest to show up power, four Latino leaders managed to set back the city's multiracial progress and Latino representation. So this is Vox, uh, this was October 19th. This is when the scandal kind of first broke out. And then here you have some pictures of like some activists. That are calling for the resignation of these four city council members. So it says here protesting calls for two city council members to resign continue in Los Angeles after leaked audio recording of racist and bigoted comments by four of the most powerful city leaders. Appeared on social media October 9th. First brought to national attention by the LA Times, the audio recordings captured former council president. Nora Martinez, along with two Latino council colleagues and a top Latino labor leader making racist and incendiary remarks about black, indigenous, Armenian, Jewish. And gay people in the city, including fellow council members. Martinez resigned after being forced to apologize and facing pressure from local, state and nation, and national leaders, including President Joe Biden to give up her seat. Now what's really interesting is. A scandal like this, it rarely ever happens. The, the fact that the LA Times and even Vox are reporting on this scandal, it just reeked of. How do I say this? I guess a collusion of sorts or something's wrong here, right? I mean, for them to be covering their own people. I know a lot of the LA Times people. I know a lot of the journalists. I know a lot of the editors. A lot of these people are very left leaning. And the fact that this audio recording, which appears to be, yeah, the recording of an October 2021 meeting. So this, this is a year old. Somebody held on to this for a year. And it just now came out right before the midterm elections. That's really interesting. And, and I'll go a little bit more into that, but I just want to finish reading this. Martinez resigned after being forced to apologize and facing pressure from local, state and national leaders, including President Joe Biden to give up receipt. Ron Herrera, the labor leader in the recording of an October 2021 meeting. Also resigned his post as president of Los Angeles county federation of labor later in the week. The other two participants, council members Gil Sadio and Kevin De Leon have resisted calls to resign. Sadio's term is up later this year after losing to a left wing challenger this summer, but De Leon's term isn't up until 2024. And as of today, December 12th, which is two months after this recording came out and the LA Times reported on this. Kevin De Leon continues to say he will not resign. Protesters managed to shut down the body for a week and its interim president, Mitchell Farrell said it would not meet until Sadio and De Leon resigned. So again, what's really interesting about this is the timing of this, right? The timing came out right before the midterms. Now you're having people resign from this. Nora Martinez has resigned as, as the other council member. Two of them have refused this to resign to, to the best of my knowledge. And here you have Kevin De Leon. If you don't know who Kevin De Leon is, Democrat first and foremost. But he's also, he also has a long history of activism. There's a couple like activist pages that I follow that are left leaning over at Instagram. And even they're saying that, hey, they're distraught that this happened to their own. But I had a question and that question was essentially, why is this happening? Why is the left actually holding, holding themselves accountable? Why is the LA Times jump on this? And I have it on very credible sources that I talked to in person. I cannot say where or who the person is, but this person. Was, was, I do, I can't say was in top Democrat leadership here in California. And this person confirmed to me that this was a hit by the democratic socialists of America. And the reason is because unfortunately, and to our dismay. Uh, or, or to our surprise, maybe is, is rather the word, is that these council members are just not left leaning enough. They're just, they're just not as progressive as the democratic socialists of America. Or at least here in Los, the Los Angeles chapter, they're not as progressive as they would like. So somebody recorded this about a year ago, held on to it and they decided to release it just weeks before the election. Very, very interesting. So here we have the first video. And this is going to be Alexis Olivia Ray and LA Taco. So here is, that's just the name of the. Thing here and I'll bring it up for you guys. So this is, this is, this happened in Lincoln Heights. And if I'm not mistaken, let me just read it here. Lincoln Heights holiday celebration. So this is, oh gosh, I just. Well, I, I need to just bear with me here folks. I accidentally closed the tab and now I gotta find it. Let's see here, share. Okay. So this is going to be Kevin De Leon. And here it is. So. Actually I want, I want the other one. Give me just one. This is not, I mean, this is the right one, but. I want to get the other one because this one, this one just kind of slows it down for everyone, but I want you guys to hear the entire thing. Kevin De Leon. Here we go. This is going to be the entire thing now. Okay. So again, this is at the Lincoln Heights, uh, the party, holiday party, which you know what, man? Oh, you know what? I'm going to let you watch the video and hear the video before I give my, my thoughts. So this, this is it right here. Alright, so obviously you can tell how those things escalated pretty quickly. But again, this is, I mean, the guy still got his Santa Claus hat on, you know, like you can see the kids, there's like one, one kid in the background, like. Clearly not interested at all in the situation. He's like playing on his phone or whatever, right? This is a holiday party and look decent people, maybe normal people might look at this. I'm like, look, man, regardless of what happened. The racist comments or whatever, um, which by the way, I probably should have pulled up like the audio of what happened. But I think by now most of you know, uh, some of the racist quote unquote racist comments that were made. By these council members. It's been a big story for quite some time. I haven't really covered it. But I figured, hey, a lot of you have been asking about this and of course we have now this new development with this video of Kevin De Leon. And a lot, a lot of people might look at this and be like, really dude, at a holiday party? But this is what I will say, okay? And, and this might be a very unpopular, uh, you know, comment. This is why the left continues to win. Because they don't play by the rules. They don't have, they don't take the moral high ground. They will harass people like Kevin De Leon because they feel like they were done wrong. They feel like, hey, you shouldn't have done this. This is wrong. We need you to resign. Black Lives Matter Los Angeles, okay? They have been protesting every single day in front of Kevin De Leon's off, or not offices, home residence in tents. If you go to Black Lives Matter Los Angeles, they, for weeks now, they have been pitching tents in front of Kevin De Leon. And they refuse to leave until Kevin De Leon resigns. That is dedication. Are they being violent? No, they're not. In this one, they clearly, it gets to the point, but they're not being violent. They're being dedicated. You can think whatever you want. That's dedication. Those are people who want to create political change. I don't see that on the right almost ever. Oh, but we work. I promise you, these people work. I promise you. But again, let's, let's, let's break this video down. So obviously. So here like in the mirror. So for those of you who are probably just listening, obviously he's at this event. There's kids everywhere. There's people surprisingly still wearing masks. That's probably the most shocking part of this video for me. And, and you have a group of activists chasing after Kevin De Leon as it seems like he's leaving the event. Or at least there's a part of the event where, I don't know, maybe he wants to go to the bathroom. I don't know, but he's walking out. And you have the, and so he kind of has like his staff and it looks like one security guy in front of him, or at least someone maybe in his campaign. I don't know who the person exactly is, kind of creating a barrier around the activists and Kevin De Leon. And then there's one guy specifically. I, I don't want to stereotype here, but he looks African American, Sal maybe? Or at least like maybe like mixed, right? Like maybe Hispanic, like Afro Latino, maybe? I don't know. He's wearing a mask improperly, by the way, which is probably the most dangerous thing you can do is wear a mask on your chin. And then he's got a beanie and then I, well, maybe he took off his mask that's protecting him. But then he took it off to convey words and then he's recording Kevin De Leon. He's right in front of him. And here you can see in this still image that Kevin De Leon is headed to the double doors with the exit sign, right? Okay. So this is where it kind of gets a little bit crazy. Here you have this guy, uh, it looks to be Hispanic. He kind of starts pushing this activist out of the way so that Kevin De Leon can actually get through to the doors. Because the guy was kind of impeding him from leaving, which if I'm not mistaken, I'm not a police officer or anything. That's kind of like false imprisonment. Right? Like you could technically be charged if you're stopping someone from being able to, to exit or get away from you. Again, not a police officer. I don't know. So then unfortunately the guy, that same activists gets through the other door because again it's double doors. And he gets through to where Kevin De Leon is and it seems to be like a smaller room. Okay. At that point, it looks like Kevin De Leon is trying to push the activists back out. So from what I can see based off this video alone, not knowing context, not knowing everything else that transpired through this. It looks like Kevin De Leon is the first to put hands on this man, if I'm not mistaken. Okay. So then, so then now he get, now he kind of like corners him. This activist corners Kevin De Leon and he's kind of putting his hands up like, look at my hands. I'm not assaulting Kevin De Leon. But he does seem to kind of be bumping into Kevin and pressing up against the wall. Kevin De Leon also continues to put his, his hands up in the air. Now they're both nose kissing. Their noses have definitely made contact. Looking a little sauce. Yelling at his face and then you have people, it looks like either some of the protesters or some of the Kevin De Leon staff. Are trying to get the protester off of Kevin De Leon because again, Kevin De Leon is trying to push his way forward. But the protester with his hands up in the air, uh, is pushing him back up against the wall. Okay. And at this point, the Santa Claus hat comes off. That jet, that's Mexican, that's Hispanic for it's on now. That's what that is, right? You take that Santa Claus like, alright, the children are gone. Alright, the hat comes off, bro. You know what I mean? Like I'm about, I'm about to go Goblin mode. I think that's what the proper terminology is, right? So now he's going Goblin mode on this guy and now fists are flying. Yep. There you have it. So uh, I don't know if this is the same day, but there is now another video that has surfaced as well. And this is going to be, I guess this is after assaulting Jason. Okay. So this is a different one. It says, this is just a couple of months. I'm going to pull it up here in a second. Here we go. So actually, yeah, let me go back a little bit. That's not what I meant to do. This is J Town action, just a few months after assaulting Jason. At Kevin De Leon assaulted us as we confronted him at Alvera Street while he campaigned with L A S D gang leader Villanueva. At Alex Sheriff Villanueva. This is December 9th. And I don't know exactly how old this video footage is. It seems to be of December 9th. This was about three days ago. And here's the video for you guys to see. So this is Kevin De Leon. I believe this is Placita Alvera. Does that look like Placita Alvera? It really looks like Alvera, right? Yeah. So here's a video. So again, kind of the same thing is happening here. You have people with masks, look like activists. They are um, surrounding Kevin De Leon as he's making his way over to Placita Alvera. The guy again, for whatever reason, well, his phone case has ACAB. All cops are bastards. These are abolitionists. These are communists. These are socialists. It's a common phrase that they use among themselves, ACAB. So his phone case says that. So I'm sure he is very unbiased person with no political motives. And then, and then you have people behind him wearing masks, but this guy again is, is, he's really sacrificing his life here because he's removing his mask. Possibly inhaling some very deadly viruses up in the air, but here he is and Kevin, he was walking kind of in line with Kevin De Leon. And I guess maybe he bumped into him or whatever and Kevin De Leon just kind of bumped him off.
What is going on, man? Why you gotta get aggressive? Why you gotta get aggressive?
Alright, so at this point, there's another activist thankfully also wearing his mask thankfully and he's wearing it properly. Let's see, is it over the nose? Yes, it is. Okay. Thank God. Okay. So his mask is covering his mouth and his nose. And he's really up in Kevin De Leon's face, like really in his personal space and he's recording him in his face. And at that point, Kevin De Leon uh, goes for the phone that this activist is, is um, recording him with and that's where you go, hey. There you go. There it is. Oh, is that a CNN hat? No. Caught him 4K by CNN, bro. It's over for this guy. Poor guy, man. Wait, wait a minute. Wait, wait a minute. Is this guy wearing a mask? Oh, it does. I could barely, it does look. Yes, there he is. It is the N95 mask, bro. Imagine being such a tool. Of course that's CNN. Alright, well. And everywhere you just have Hispanics just trying to have a good time, looking around saying, what the heck is going on? Because nobody knows what's going on. And so it looks to be like this is just another example of quote unquote, uh, Kevin DeLeón. Uh, you know, assaulting people supposedly, but obviously the point here is he's being followed by activists. They're asking that he resigns and, and I'm going to give you guys kind of like my two cents. Well, actually, I'm sorry, before I go into my, into my little commentary, uh, this is Kevin DeLeón. Uh, and he actually put out a formal statement, uh, December 10th, following, uh, that holiday event. And he put it in English and in Spanish, but this is Kevin DeLeón on his Twitter. I'm just gonna bring this up for you guys. At a holiday event last night where scores of families and children present, council member DeLeón, a staff member and nonprofit staff person were physically assaulted by so-called activists. Please see the council member's statement. Updated statement by Los Angeles City Council Member Kevin DeLeón on physical assault at Lincoln Heights Holiday Celebration. A group of so-called activists who have been harassing my staff and me for more than a year, cornered and physically assaulted me, a staff member and a volunteer during a holiday event on Friday evening. Jason Reedy and his accomplices started by shouting obscenities and disrupting a community, uh, toy giveaway and a tree lighting ceremony already underway. I decided to try, uh, the ex, to exit the event, uh, to draw the disruptors away from the attending families and children and leave without further incident. Still, we discovered Reedy and others had blocked all available exits. Once we were able to push open a door and try to get out, Reedy launched a pelvic thrust, followed by a headbutt to my forehead. My response and defense of myself was to push him off of me. In the ensuing struggle, Reedy struck me in the face with a closed fist, violently elbowed a female staff member and injured a volunteer in front of horrified parents and children. The escalating political rhetoric is beyond unacceptable, now turning verbal threats into physical acts of violence. It's dangerous pattern, it's a dangerous pattern that must end before more serious harm or loss of life occurs. Leaders must collectively step up to curb, uh, rising hostilities towards staff and elected officials. In no way is violence a form of free speech and acts like these have no place in politics or democracy. Uh, so this is Kevin DeLeón's, you know, response to what happened. It seems like the, by the, the threats of, of the activists and harassment by them have been over a year. But again, this is what happens when you're not woke enough. This is what happens when you're not left enough. These people think that they are safe because they are moderate Democrats or because they call themselves Democrats. That's just never going to be the case, sadly. You either do what they tell you to do, you either go by Democratic Socialists of America or they will release tapes and leak the video or the audio over to their known uh, uh, people that help them at the Los Angeles Times, for example. You're, you're gonna have to go by what they say. You're gonna have to do what they want or else they're going to continue to attack you by this. In full transparency, I have personally reached out to Kevin DeLeón. Uh, I would be happy to have him on a podcast. I would be happy to sit down and talk with him. We've reached out to them here at the media company that we work with. I, I would like nothing more than to clear things up and see what's really going on. Why is it that these activists are coming after him? And I think a lot of it has to do is because they won't defund the police. I think a lot of it is because that they said the council members, again, you and I might be living here in Los Angeles. And we might say, wow, these people really hate our city, but they're just not hateful enough. They're not going crazy enough. And, and look, again, you don't have to agree with me. You, you, I'm not, I'm not telling you that this is the way the right should become. All I am saying is this stuff works. It applies pressure to people. They've already gotten plenty of people to resign. They, they do what, what is called B A M N, by any means necessary. This is the way they win. This is the way they intimidate. They win by intimidating people. They will literally go to a place where there are families and there are children. And they will harass that candidate or they will harass that city council member or they will harass whoever it needs to be, until those people say, you know what, I can't do this anymore. I can't continue to be harassed and bullied in public. It's no longer safe wherever I go. It's just best I give them what they want. So to me, when I reached out to Kevin DeLeón, hey, I want to hear what you have to say. Let's talk about that audio. Let's say, is this really what's happening or is there something else afoot? As I stated to you guys before I started this segment, um, what I know for a fact is that this is a political hit by the Democratic Socialists of America. We need to find out why this is happening to Kevin DeLeón and look, what we're trying to accomplish here. This isn't just about me. This isn't just about Anthony Cabasa being on YouTube at 4 P M. Every single day. What we're trying to build here in this production company is this is going to be a place where people can come and give you the truth. Nowhere else, you can't go to LA Times, you can't go to, to K T L F five, because these people are all controlled opposition. That, that, these are people that are controlled, that, that, that have activists pretending to be journalists. That's not who we are. And, and we're gonna, and you know, from, from, from my mouth, the gods here, we're going to be creating news. We're going to creating real journalism, independent journalism, that it's going to be a safe haven for people that are being persecuted by communists and socialists. And they can come here and they can sit down, we can have a conversation. Their, their story is not going to be taken out of context. We're not going to threaten them with anything, whatever they wish to relay to people. And we will push them and ask for the truth of why these things are happening. Why are these things being allowed? Well, why is this happening in Los Angeles? Why is it that you have activists pretending to be journalists working for some of the largest publications in the nation? Why is it that whenever crime really happens, it never gets exposed? Why is the homelessness problem never been solved? Why, why is the police being defunded? Why did Sheriff Villanueva get pushed out as sheriff? Was it because he was coming after city or LA Board of Supervisors? Mr. Villanueva, if anyone in your team or yourself is listening to this, we invite you to sit down. It is long past time overdue that you guys start being honest with people. I know that maybe in your mind, the media has bought out, it has been sold out. But there are shows like this one that exists so that you can get the truth out. Not your truth, but just the truth. There is no bias in truth, right? It's just, it just is. There's no Democrat truth. There's no Republican truth. There's just the truth. And if you guys ever want to sit down, look, and this is why we're staying here in Los Angeles. I've told you guys many times over and over again, I've been offered jobs in Texas, I've been offered jobs in DC, Washington DC. I got offered a job to be a White House correspondent for one of the largest networks in the nation. I, I don't want to move from Los Angeles. I would rather create here so that people like Kevin DeLeón, Alex Villanueva, or others can start exposing what's really happening. We need these, these fired police officers, these fired firefighters, we need you guys to come on this show. We need you guys to come into this media company. We need you guys to come into our studio. So we can sit down and we need whistleblowers. We need people coming forward and saying, this is what's really happening within the LA City Council Members' staff. This is, this is who's really behind this. We need people to start being brave so that we can start dismantling what is the corruption, the virus that is known here in Los Angeles. It's the only way. We need to expose the truth. We need to shed light on all this darkness. It's disgusting what's happening. Let's listen to what Kevin DeLeón has. If he's really racist, then we'll expose it. I'm not saying he's not. What's the context behind things? And why, what are these activists' real intentions? Are they really here for the people? Are they really here to expose racist people? Or is it just because these city council members are not giving them what they want? Or because they're not caving into their demands? I think what we're witnessing here are council members saying, you know what, enough is enough. LA Times, Democratic Socialists of America, we're not going to give in. We're sick and tired of this. And he's pushing back. Do I have to agree with everything? No, absolutely not. Do I have to, do I have to, um, you know, pretend he didn't say what he said on recorded audio? No, absolutely not. But hey, let's hear the guy out. I don't think that, uh, showing up to his house or, or getting in his face when he's trying to have an event with children and families that have no idea what's going on. But hey, again, if this is what works for them, they'll continue doing it. And, and I think that if you have someone like Kevin DeLeón, who is pushing back, saying, dude, I'm not going to give into this. It's going to set a different precedent. Maybe it's going to encourage others to be like, you know what? We've made some mistakes, but we should be able to apologize to people and then let the people decide, which is what Kevin DeLeón has said. Like, look, I admit what I said was wrong. Here's my apology, but people are like, that's not enough. We want you gone. And he's like, no, I'm not going to be gone. I'm going to wait till the people either vote me out or they, you know, recall, whatever it takes. So again, Mr. DeLeón, I, I, I sent you my number. If you want to talk, let's talk. With that, I'm going to head into the last segment here. This is Elon Musk booed by a crowd after Dave Chappelle brings him on stage at comedy gig. So, uh, uh, tech billionaire Elon Musk was met with a mixture of boos and cheers from an audience at a Dave Chappelle comedy show Sunday night. The comedian brought the Tesla CEO out on the stage at a special Punchline Comedy Club event at the Chase Center in San Francisco. Alright, let me tell you something. The fact that this was done in San Francisco, you know, like, first of all, San Francisco hates Dave Chappelle. Let's be honest. Secondly, Twitter HQ, isn't it in San Francisco? It's in San Francisco. It's somewhere up there, like in the Silicon Valley. It's near San Francisco. He just fired all these people and they're probably at this comedy event, maybe, I don't know. But so it's already kind of like, okay, it's San Francisco, right? In a video shared on Twitter, the crowd can be heard cheering Musk, whose recent purchase of the social media platform has attracted criticism due to concerns about mass layoffs and looser content moderation. Quote, ladies and gentlemen, make some noise for the richest man in the world. Chappelle tells the audience, a number of audience members cheered, though there was also a loud chorus of boos too. So this is the video so you guys can see. Uh, there's also people like claiming that Elon Musk, because he owns Twitter, that, uh, people are uploading this on Twitter and they're being deleted all over the place. I've had this link, uh, to this video open for a few hours now. It hasn't been taken down to the best of my knowledge. I'm going to play it here for you guys. So again, this is over, uh, this is, uh, live video footage for you guys. So it goes on for about two minutes, 18 seconds and it's basically again, him just kind of being, you know, booed and, and, and you know, one thing I will say is it's really interesting how fast you can go from like being like the, the person that people love to like being the person that just everybody hates now, you know? You believe in free speech? Oh, we hate you now, which is kind of interesting because I, you know, I've seen some tweets saying like, if you own, uh, if you own a Tesla, it's basically like owning a MAGA hat now. So you have like all these people, you know? I saw a meme online saying like, what, you know, it's Elon Musk looking out like the curtains and or, you know, looking out the window with the curtains or whatever. And it's like watching the employees you just fired drive away in the car that you, that you made, you know, like driving away in a Tesla, like that's gotta hurt. Imagine working at Twitter, owning a Tesla, and then Elon Musk just fired you and you gotta drive away in a Tesla. That's gotta be brutal, right? But listen, you, you know, i- i- it's really interesting and, and all of this has to basically boil down to the Twitter files. We are now at the Twitter Files Part Five. Part Five has just been released today and it's called the Removal of Trump From Twitter. This is what people really hate. They hate that there's people back on Twitter that they absolutely hate. And this once again just proves that it's never been about, you know, uh, the moral high ground or, or, oh, we just want people off the platform that are dangerous. What they fear are ideas that challenge their, their theology, their, or lack of theology, their theism. You know, whatever you want to call it, it's, it's, it's crazy to me to watch people literally melt down. And I, you have like people like Elton John saying that they have to leave Twitter because lack of safety and they're concerned about calls to violence and this is not, get real, man, you know? The, oh, oh, this is what did it for Elton John on Twitter? Not like the rampant pornography, not the rampant exploitation of, of children? No, 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 it, it's, it's First Amendment. It's, it's conservatives being allowed to speak. Get real, man, you know? But here, here we have, you know, the threat, I'm just going to read a couple of them off for you guys. Thread, the Twitter Files Part Five, the Removal of Trump From Twitter. And this is again, this is just three hours ago. I, I was reading this as I was getting ready for today's show. On the morning of January 8th, President Donald Trump, uh, with one remaining strike before getting, uh, before being at risk of permanence especially for Twitter tweets twice. At 6:46 AM, the 75 million great American patriots who voted for me, America first and make America great again, will have a giant voice long into the future. They will not be disrespected or treated unfairly in any way, shape or form. And at 7:44 AM, this was his last tweet. And it said, to all of those who have asked, I will not be going to the inauguration on January 20th, which of course we know he did not. For years Twitter had resisted calls both internal and external to ban Trump on the grounds that blocking a world leader from the platform or removing their controversial tweets would hide important information that people should be able to see and debate. Quote, our mission is to provide a forum that enables people to be informed and to engage your leaders directly. The company in ruin 2019, Twitter's aim was to protect the public's right to hear from their leaders and to hold them accountable. Says, but after January 6th, as M Taibbi and Schellenberg M D have documented, pressure grew both inside and outside of Twitter to ban President Trump. And it goes on to kind of give like an outline of like some internal documents of, of why we should ban him. This is what we need to do. Uh, this is an obvious threat to democracy. And it says, but the Twitter staff assigned to evaluate tweets quickly concluded that Trump had not violated Twitter policies. I think we've had a hard time saying this is incitement, wrote one staffer. So here you have Twitter insiders going back and forth on whether they should ban Trump. And they basically concluded that, well, he's not violating any specific Twitter policy. We, we, we have, we're having a hard time saying that this is actual incitement. What ends up happening? Another staffer agreed, quote, don't see the incitement angle here. There was never any real conclusive evidence that he was inciting violence per Twitter insider internal documents. This is what they fear. This is what they have feared. And again, this is what they've been, and I've, and I've said this many times, the, you know, the transition period for, since Elon announced that he was buying Twitter, to the time he acquired it, these people had months to do away with evidence. This is all the stuff they left behind. This is the stuff they didn't think was going to be damning evidence. Imagine the stuff they were able to get away with. Now again, I don't have any evidence that they did delete all these things, but who knows, right? Who knows what else they have deleted off these servers? And I think to be honest with you, Elon Musk is going to get to the bottom of it. So it's no wonder why in San Francisco of all places, let's be honest, it's San Francisco. Why is he getting booed? Here you have this person who everyone thought was going to save global warming, right? Oh, he's gonna, he's gonna solve this by creating more Teslas, even though the banks are more detrimental to our environment than anything else, really. He's gonna rescue all of us. And now he's being booed. Now people hate him. Nobody cares for this guy. Why? Because he's exposing the truth. And again, this is something that I've said to so many people. When you're fighting for what's right, when you are doing what is right, you don't have to be a perfect person. I'm not excusing his Neuralink stuff and wanting to put brain chips in people. I'd say, and I'm not telling you to trust Elon Musk. Who knows? This might all be an angle to sway all of us one way. Who knows what's being omitted, right? Who knows? But from what we are able to see, again, as I stated on Friday, or I think Thursday I said, it's not about, well, we already knew this. It's, no, 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 no. Here's the evidence for it and now we have it at our disposal. And I, you know, I'm going to continue reading this. I'll do a quick recap of, of some of the more damning stuff as, as I finish this Twitter Files Part Five today, but I don't know if Elon Musk is going to be able to get back on the good graces of the left, but who knows? Maybe he doesn't want to be. With that, we'll end it here today, guys. Thank you guys so much for joining me. We will be back tomorrow, Tuesday, God willing, December 13th. And if you liked the show again, like and subscribe, drop a comment, let us know. And, uh, for those of you who are probably checking out my shirt right now, you might be wondering yourself, wait a minute, that's a nice little sweater. It is getting colder, Anthony. It says, trust God on it. Where can I buy some of that trust God merch? Well, down below is a link to my merch. And if you enter promo code CHRISTMAS with the word Christ at the very beginning, my, my amigos, you can get up to, what is it? 10% off, 15%? 10% off. And for my paid subscribers on Patreon, you get 15% off. There we go, man. So it, it comes There we go, man, so it, it comes in hoodies, it comes in crew neck tees, it comes in shirts, we got the hat as well. If you guys wanna continue to support our work, head on over there, but with that, guys, thank you guys so much for listening, and I'll see you guys tomorrow.